All right. That concludes our new business. I'd like to make a couple of announcements on vacancies for county commissioners, Bunkin County boards. We have vacancies on the newly reconstituted library board. There are five vacancies, one from each commission district and two at large. On the Historic Resource Commission, we have two vacancies. On the Asheville Board of Adjustments, one vacancy and the County Board of Adjustment, two vacancies. We'll now also have our general public comment. If you'd like to comment to the board, your time is three minutes. If your time expires, you can leave any questions with your name, address, and phone number with the county manager. Board members are not expected to comment on any matters during public comment. This is the public's opportunity to speak to us. And the board reserves the right to deny public address on topics that have already been covered where there was public comment earlier this evening. Are there any members of the public who'd like to comment? Mr. Rice?
Sit tight. If you slide home, you'll be with me. So I'll just slide to you. I want you to pay attention. Can you pay attention for a few minutes? Okay. This transparency thing is getting under my skin. We're talking about the state law that we have 15 percent. Well, state law says eight and a half percent. And recommendation is not that you have to do it on your fund balance. You've got $75 million. It's a lot of money. Now, you're saying if you reduce that, it's 18 percent, I think. If you go down to 15, you've got $75 million. You've got that amount. Whatever it is, it's a lot of money. Okay? Now, talking about one cent on the tax rate, $3.6 million? Oh, you've just sneezed in your pipe. Let me tell you what. If you want to make an adjustment, let's do it right. State law does not give the school systems a fund balance. They don't even give, you carry that in your fund balance. Now, we're doubling down. We've got Bunkin County School with 11.9 million as of June 30th of last year. That's actually in their done budget. Asheville City has got 8.9. If you add that together, that is $20.9 million. So you divide that by 3.6, and the tax rate should be 5.8 cents right now. And you add the one cent that you just talked about, we could even bring it to 6.8. Now, if you don't believe my numbers, why don't you believe these auditors out here? Go look in your audit book. Now, this don't make common sense when you're wanting to do something for the public, but you're not really being honest with the public where the money is and why you're doing it. These special interest groups like school teachers and all these folks getting the attention where nobody else is, it ain't right. Okay? Think on that a while.
All right. Thank you. Anyone else? Great. I've got a couple of announcements. On January 22nd at 9:00 a.m., the board commissioners will meet with area college presidents and university councilors and legislative representatives to discuss pre-K needs. That will be at 200 College Street, first floor conference room. On January 30th, there will be an open town hall meeting at the AB Tech Mission Conference Center on the campus of AB Tech, 340 Victoria Road, from 6:00 to 8:00 p.m. On February 6th at 5:00 p.m., we'll hold the next regular board of county commissioners meeting in room 326 at 200 College Street in downtown Asheville. We need to have a closed session to discuss a personnel matter. Mr. Prue?
Yes, sir. Pursuant to North Carolina General Statute 143, 31811A6, discuss a personnel matter. Just expect some direction from the board.
Okay. And are there any other topics that need to be addressed in closed session?
Chairman, I just have a comment. It looks like we have another emergency service worker in the back. I just want to thank him for your service. You can leave us if you want to. And we're always grateful for our Bunkin County Police Department that's here, but I just wanted to acknowledge it looks like a guest back there and thanking for what they do.
Thank you, Mr. Prue. Yes. All right. Is there a motion to go into closed session?
No motion.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? We will read adjourn to come back into open session and we'll take no action when we do so. Hey, let's go ahead and review the agenda for the pre-meeting. And if everyone who's here would please put yourself in zone, mute or turn them off. All right. Let's just walk through the agenda and see if there's any questions, any commissioners Jump down to the consent agenda. Any items, any questions for the board, questions on the consent agenda? Good news, festival of lights celebration, success, get a report there. Public hearing on excise tax overpayment refund. There's two items there. County managers' report. We'll have a discussion of some guidance that the county managers received around several items, and so we'll get a report from the county manager and have some discussion on that item. Do, listen, do we anticipate voting on that, or is this more of just a report from you? Are you anticipating that you'd need a vote tonight for the commission on that item?
I don't, we do not need a vote, and I think it's coming more from commission than of the issue instructions.
All right. So we'll have a discussion, and if there's a broad sense of agreement, it sounds like we'll, there will just be a report. But let's have the discussion and we'll see, we'll see where it goes. All right. Under new business, we will have a presentation on the FY '17 audit. And Tim Flora and the auditors will present the report. Following that, we have two resolutions declaring ambulances as surplus properties and donating them to the Fairview Fire District and the Bunkin County Rescue Squad. Finally, we'll have a discussion about amendments to the county employee implement weather policy. Several board appointments following that that we'll just make announcements on. And following that, we'll have additional public comment. We will have public comment on any items we vote on this evening at the time of voting on. So any questions from any commissioners about any items in the agenda? All right. Well, it's 5 o'clock, so I think we are ready to go. So if Max could start the introductory video, that'd be great. Good evening. I'd like to call the January 16th, 2018 meeting of the Bunkin County Commission to Order. Thank you all for being with us this evening. Let's start our meeting by rising and saying the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic on which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
As we gather and prepare for the commission meeting this evening, I'd like to invite us all into a time of silence or prayer to remember that the decisions that we make and the conversations we participate in may have impacts that reach far and wide into our community. Let us also remember those in our community who are in need of things that we oftentimes take for granted, warmth, nourishment, economic livelihood, and community. Please join me in a moment of silence before we begin our meeting this evening. Thank you. And before we move to the consent agenda, let me read the ethics reminder to the board. In accordance with the Code of Ethics adopted by this board, all county commissioners have a duty to obey all applicable laws regarding official actions, to uphold the integrity and independence of the office, to avoid impropriety in the exercise of official duties, to faithfully perform the duties of the office, and to conduct the affairs of the governing board in an open and public manner. Are there any items on the agenda, the outcome of which would have a direct, substantial, and readily identifiable financial impact for any board member? Also, does any board member have a financial interest in any contract coming before the board today? There being none, all board members have a duty and obligation to vote on any matters voted on by the commission at this meeting. All right. We now come to the consent agenda. Are there any questions, or would someone like to make a motion to approve the consent agenda and to follow the remainder of the agenda as published?
No.
All right. We've got a motion in a second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? All right. Thank you. Next item on the agenda is a good news report on the Festival of Lights, and I believe Josh O'Connor and some of his staff are here to tell us about the event this year and to give us an update. Thanks for being with us.
Thank you for having me. I believe Max is going to pull up some slides for us, but it's a pleasure to be here tonight. For me, it's a pleasure to be here and give some positive news of the, which I have very little responsibility.
Can't hear him back here.
This crew behind me, as well as some folks that could not be here tonight, put a lot of work into it. So we just wanted to give you all a quick wrap-up of the Festival of Lights and what we did out of Lake Julian this year. Festival of Lights starts off as a walkthrough, the first day of December each year. We did that December 1st. This year, we had the luck of following on a weekend. We ran the actual show, December 2nd through the 23rd, and this is our 17th year of operation for the show. For the last couple of years, we've been seeing decline in attendance. We had a lot of competition. This year, we had a lucky break, and one of our competitors did not return, and we took full advantage of that and tried to maximize our gains on attendance as much as possible. That's just me showing off my kids, sorry. So this year, through our walkthrough show, we had 1,109 attendees. That's about double what we've had in years past. We had over 5,000 cars through the gate throughout the duration of the show, and that resulted in $50,000 worth of ticket sales. The nice part about the Festival of Lights is we take 20% of that money, we put it into the Bunkin County Special Olympics and help fund that program, which from a staff perspective lowers the amount of fundraising that we have to do throughout the year. So we're very relieved to have gotten such a high number. And then the other proceeds we get from the show go directly back into the show so that we can expand it and make it an attraction that people want to return to year after year. I'll ask David Blint, the supervisor out of Lake Julian, to come up and just explain a little bit about what goes into the show and when they start preparing for that.
I just want to start by saying thank you very much for the recognition. We do put a lot of hard work into this and take a lot of pride in it, this being year 17. We kind of perfected it almost. Each year, we learn new things, easier ways to do things, just to simplify the whole process. And I just want to thank my staff who were here with me today. They're a huge part of this. They work very hard and they take as much pride in it as I do. And we're all very proud of what we accomplished. We worked on this, the preparation for this, about three weeks worth of putting the decorations up. And that's myself along with the staff, and then we have the grounds maintenance department comes out and helps us for several days because some of our displays are, if you're into the show, are extremely large, and we need as much manpower as we can get to get some of these things. So they are a huge help to us, and that's about it. We're just very proud of what we accomplished this year, and hopefully we'll be able to build it to be very, very better next year. Thank you very much.
Great. Thank you, guys. Great job.
So I got a comment before you go. I got to go through the walkthrough with kids and grandkids, and it was a blast. 1,100 people that night, smores. Y'all haven't been, they have smores. That's a reason, I wanted enough of a reason to go, but the lights are fantastic, and it's just a clean atmosphere and fun for the entire family and, I recommend, it's a commercial for next year. But I also want to thank you guys and thank Bunkin County Grounds Maintenance. There's a lot of hard work goes into that out there, putting up, taking down, taking care of them, but the lights were spectacular this year. Thank you.
Great job. Great job. All right. The next item on our agenda are the public hearings. The first is the excise tax overpayment refund, and Mike Prue will explain the first item as well as the next one.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, good evening. Anyone who's bought and sold property knows that when you sell property as a seller, you're responsible to pay excise tax $5 per $1,000, or $1 per $500 in value, which goes to the registered deeds office and is distributed through finance. We have two situations here that popped up in the last six months. One from a law firm of Ronald Sneed. Mr. Sneed is here tonight in case there's any questions. But his firm filed a deed at the registered deeds office, and there's also, part of the reason this mistake occurred, I think, is that we have automated recording now. You don't have to go there and clock it in person. So apparently, on December 7th, they clocked in through the automated system a deed and paid the $450 tax. The next morning, someone in the office clicked the button again, recorded, and paid the $450 again. So clearly, they only need to pay the $450 excise tax once. The recording fees, $26 or so dollars, that's their problem, but the $450 would be within the most discretion to allow them to have that refund. And if there's any other questions, I'd be glad to try to answer that.
These are listed as public hearings. We need to open them up for public comment on each one?
Yes, sir.
Great. All right. Let's go ahead and I'd like to open a public hearing on the excise tax overpayment refund related to Best Invest PLLC at 5:11. Are there any members of the public who'd like to comment?
Just clarify, I think I did it backwards. That was, I just discussed the request to Ronald Sneed.
Okay. All right. Let's make this public hearing the one on the Sneed refund first. Are there any members of the public who'd like to comment on the proposed refund to Sneed? All right. I'll close the public hearing at 5:12. Is there a motion?
No.
All right. Motion and second are made. Any comments? All in favor of the excise tax overpayment refund to Ronald Sneed? Please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. I'd like to open the public hearing at 5:12 on the proposed overpayment refund to Best Invest. Are there any members of the public who would like to comment on this proposed refund? All right. Seeing.
It's slightly different.
Okay.
Tell us about this one. In this situation from Best Invest, it's an $828 request, and apparently, they had recorded the deed in Bunkin County, and then someone had gone down the mountain to Rutherford County and clocked it in there. So they have, they discovered that mistake, then they went down the mountain, so now they're requesting the refund from Bunkin County. So they did also supply part of the agenda packet as the corrected reporting from Rutherford County showing the correct excise tax there.
Okay. Thank you. All right. We'll open the public hearing on the proposed refund of $828 to Best Invest. Are there any members of the public who would like to comment on this matter? All right. Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing. Is there a motion?
No motion.
Say.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. Thank you, Mr. Prue. All right. I will turn it over to County Manager Mandy Stone for an update on instructions to the county manager.
Chairman and Commissioner Stone first, ask if the board wants to speak in relation to those instructions. I'll begin and invite any others to join in, of course. County Manager Stone, I want to just begin by again expressing appreciation to you and your staff for the significant reforms that have been put in place, and this is a fairly simple set of four additional instructions we'd like to make and to do it in this setting to make sure our community is aware of these and tracking along with us as we continue to look at ways to strengthen transparency and accountability at the county. So if you don't mind, I'll just briefly read through this document, and if any others would like to comment or weigh in, and then if you have any response. This is a critical period of Bunkin County as we work to repair public trust and implement reforms to ensure that every tax dollar is spent appropriately and that the county focuses on its singular mission to serve our community. The full board of commissioners has worked together to develop the action steps outlined here, building upon the reforms that have been implemented since July 1st, 2017. These additional steps read as follows. Number one, if it is determined that public funds have been used for illegal or unethical purposes, the board of commissioners instruct the county manager to continue efforts to recover funds as legally permissible. Number two, the board of commissioners shall provide a performance review of all appointed staff, I don't think that would be the county manager, the chief financial officer, the county clerk, and the currently vacant position of the board of commissioners attorney, in July of each year. Due to the special circumstances of fiscal year 2018, the board of commissioners will also conduct a mid-year goal-setting session and review with appointed staff to take place no later than February 2018. Number three, the chief financial officer will provide public budget to actual reports at the first board of commissioners meeting of each month. And I believe actually there should have been an editing that, that the budget director would also present updated budget, I'm sorry, that the budget director would present the budget to the actual report at the first meeting of each month, and the chief financial officer would report financial updates at that meeting. So that's how this should be. And number four, on a quarterly basis, the internal auditors will report to the board of commissioners on the current priorities of the internal audit committee. And that concludes the instructions here. If anyone else on the commission would like to add anything regarding the over to, from your agenda?
I have something. We all sit down and talk about this. Through the things I'm here has already been basically, the financial director comes forward. Ms. Stone, the county manager, is already in the process of trying to recover funds from, screen, in the process of things that's happened. And I look at it as the financial director, he can come each month or he can come each quarter, but I can, I look at the fact of number four, or the audit person, that internal auditor that's looking at things, she don't need to come to every, I wouldn't say every quarter, because it, there's things that she'll be looking at that they'll come before me. And Ms. Stone, county manager Stone, and I don't really get where we're going here because this is just something that was put together and put in the paper. And insofar as instructing through these things, we've never had to instruct. She's brought to us and said, let's just go with it. You know, this is what I'd like to do. And she's done that for seven months. Far as evaluating her own, we're a aid in that because we don't even have any things to go through the valuation with them. We don't have a plan yet. So, you know, for Kathy Hughes, I can give aids tonight because they've worked very hard to get to this point. Tim's worked hard, I just don't have to evaluate at the present time. But this, we talked about, I did talk to you, Jasmine, and I said, this is for later on, and we'd have to look at it. I didn't know it was going to be put in paper and brought forward. So I think it needs to be relooked at because through the things that's here is already part of what she has put in place herself without instructions from us, and that's exactly why I'm going to say.
I'd like to just comment on that also, that I guess I was misinformed or didn't hear it, and as far as I know, you wasn't instructed by anyone to start up what you've already done, correct?
You know, and I've said it before, I think the direction of the board for me has been clear since you interviewed me in June, and things you wanted to focus me on, you wanted me to focus on. I think as we moved into a period where additional information's come forward, I feel like the board has been clear in their direction, and from a staff perspective, the more direction and the more clarity is a positive thing. You know, I think every one of you and every one of us are relentlessly focused on these issues every day. So I certainly appreciate and respect any additional direction from the board or reinforcing direction you've already given. I think, as has already been mentioned, we did receive these and begin moving forward on these. The internal auditor's been before you once. I have asked the clerk to make sure that she's scheduled on a quarterly basis. We've talked about adding both the financial update and the budget to actuals under the county manager's report once a month to get that, and I think Ms. Hughes is working on that on a standing schedule. I think it fits well with what you all have directed us about increased transparency and ease of access to citizens and information. So for some of them, they'll go to the web and find what they want. For some of them, they rely on these reports in this public meetings. And, you know, from a staff perspective, we welcome any direction. We'll do all we can to comply with them. I feel like I have had a strong sense of the issues that are important to this board, and I think as issues have emerged, the board's been clear, both individually and collectively, about their expectations of me and of senior leadership.
And when it comes to number four, the audit committee, since we've restructured the audit committee now, and we have two commissioners on the audit committee, we set up, and maybe we didn't make that clear enough, we set up an interim, one of the subcommittees of the audit committee is made up of me and Robert, the two commissioners, the chair of the audit committee. the chair of the audit committee, and Terry. And we meet once a quarter. And that pretty much should keep us in the loop with the, you know, whatever's going on there.
So it's my understanding tonight that part of this, as well as county manager giving us a report and explanation on some of the things, some of the good things that's been going on and some of the challenging things that we've tried to overcome. And I thank you for that. And one of the focuses, as we look at the revenue that we've received and we look at the audited results of the expenses that are coming in and what it takes to sustain the county and do our strategic priorities, I think, you know, one of the things that we should look at in the 2018 budget in order to return money back to the taxpayer, you know, would be a 1 cent reduction in our rate. I would like to see the board, you know, agree to give you instruction to look at that in returning that back in the 2018 budget.
I, I think it's good to have all of this in a format. And I think these are all good things that we've all had endless conversations about. I think if I were waving a magic wand, and to Joe's point, I think senior leadership is always trying to make the tax rate as low as possible. And so I think that part goes without saying. But if I were going to change anything, it would be to change policies and give more corrections to P-card spending. I would like, you know, Commissioner Belcher is always talking about having a watchdog. And I think we need to explore every option so that we can give the greatest transparency to the public so that the public is not surprised by some of the things that have been allowed to happen. And to me, if we're talking about transparency and responsibility of the public, we need to fast-forward into policies that prevent what happens before and from ever happening again. And I think with creative minds and knowing what we want to do, we can do all those things.
I want to express, Ms. Stone, I appreciate the spirit in which you share these instructions. They certainly do build upon many internal conversations that have happened. And part of the intent in doing this in a public meeting is to make sure the community has access to that same level of understanding of the new approaches to oversight that this Board of Commissioners is putting into place. So that's certainly the spirit in which we've had dialogue for months about this and the spirit in which these specific four action items were crystallized out of those conversations. So thank you for your responsiveness, and we certainly understand how important that two-way communication is in doing this work.
Thank you.
So in addition to the, you know, I would like to respond to Commissioner...
Me?
False. Oh, my goodness.
I didn't remember that name until like tonight.
But, you know, in addition to, you know, the suggestion on the direction on the 1% reduction, I do agree that 1 cent, thank you, Commissioner Farron, the 1 cent reduction in the property tax rate, which I do believe is sustainable and doable, you know, the watchdog gatekeeper function is something that I do think we should look at as far as structure and if, and it can, it goes across the board. It's used in the private sector, in finance departments, and it would, it would make a difference in Buncon County's, not necessarily transparency. But if you, if something does not fall exactly within policy, then a gatekeeper or a watchdog function immediately kicks it out, whether it's a P-card, whatever it is, could be, it could be a, you know, it could be anything. It could be an expensed dinner, it could be a P-card, it could be the fact that we approved, you know, something for $1.2 million and it comes in at $1.25. You know, but it's something that we should look at. I've mentioned it before, and it's not anything that is, it should be something that's my suggestion, but it's just a part of the private sector, and it is a, it is a, it is a good, it is a good policy for us to explore. And I like the conversations we're having this evening. They're open in front of the public. You're hearing everything, discussions and direction. And I think that's, I think that's good policy. And we need to do more of it. So thank you for having the opportunity to be able to have this dialogue this evening. I appreciate it.
You know, as we grow and as we look at it, and I'll tell you, coming in new, you know, with a new set of eyes, it might be time for us to look overall at the whole, our whole financial process and how we're set up. Because, you know, we are almost a half a billion dollar operation now. And, you know, the way we were running it and we have been running it, I'm not sure that growth pains probably catching up with us. And that's one of the reasons for some of the problems we'd have too. But I really think it's time for us to, you know, I don't want to step on anybody's toes, but I know sometimes we get uncomfortable when we have conversations like this. But we've got to do what's right for the taxpayers and the people who we represent. And I think it's time for us to take a good look at our financial commissioners, our financial structure, how we set up, and to make sure where we need to be in 2018 and going forward.
Well, and to your point, and I appreciate the discussion too, because too often in the past, commissioners have been the last to know things. And it's hard to lead when you're in a position of not knowing things. So going forward, I look forward to greater transparency, not just with the public, but on us too. And I think the first commission meeting I went to, I was instructed not to, or training not to micromanage the county manager. Well, that has burdened all of us. So I think we're all ready to move from that strategy.
I want to follow up on Commissioner Belcher on the 1 cent drop in the taxes. I also feel like it's feasible to do it. And we have several other commissioners that have brought this forward a couple of months ago. And I think that it's something we really need to look at. And when you think of 1 cent, that's not much. $3.6 million is what we're looking at. A couple of other commissioners have brought this up before this was brought up yesterday. So I just wonder, I wonder if I would support it 100%.
Of course you do, though. Before we do that and make that decision, I agree with you on one thing. We need to really look at that. Because the concern I have as a taxpayer, it's fine to give that back to me, but don't come back to me a year after the next two years and say, "Wait a minute, I cut it." But the services we're giving, it's going to cost more. I think we need to look ahead to make sure that what we're doing is right. Now, I agree, when you look at our fund balance of our, we have, what, 15% fund balance? And we're carrying, what is it now, Tim? Our fund balance, dollars? Dollars. Yeah, and percentage wise. See, that's 3%.
How much is in the fund balance?
About 75%.
And that's 3% over what we have mandated, 15%, right?
And it's what I've said last year in the budget process, how do you ask people to pay more in taxes when we have such a high fund balance? So, and I agree with what everybody said. I don't think we need to make something precipitous until we get all the information. But we're all the same.
But let's back up where we were and start it out here. Everything that's been brought forward, Ms. Stone brought it to us. So it's not this, it gave us an idea of where to go. And that's what we all need. But if, when you bring, when she brings something and says, "This is what I'd like to try to do," then we put it down on a piece of paper, basically what she's done. The credit is due to her and the staff. The credit is not due to us. We didn't instruct that part. And that's the part that I have a hard problem with, with this, that all we're doing is putting stuff out there that they brought forward to us to look at. And we've already had Ms. Orange in here, Tim's already spoke to us, taking care of the areas that, you know, as far as this lawsuit, as far as the people trying to get people's money back. I don't know exactly what we're doing because that was brought to us through the staff, to Ms. Stone and her staff. And the only thing is, I said, "I'm giving her an A for what she did." Not giving an A for, you know, what the staff has done. But we don't even have a plan yet put out there. So I can't say that I'll vote for something that I don't have a plan with something we want to do, but we don't know what questions we're going to ask when we do evaluation of it. So that's, I think it's put out a little too early, and that's my opinion.
One thing too, I'd like to make clear here. When I talk about restructuring the finances, you know, on what we do, I in no way mean that we don't have, when I look at Diane and her staff, Tim and his staff, we have excellent people. I mean, what they're doing, and they're doing a good job of guiding us through this process, what we're going through. But I think we owe it to them to give them the work environment that they need, that they can work in, that all of our employees can, going forward, and to make it easier for everybody and more transparent.
Any other comments?
I just got a follow-up comment. I want to, I want to agree with Commissioner Whiteside's comment regarding making sure that that 1 cent reduction in property taxes is sustainable. I mean, we need to make sure of that. But his point about the fund balance, as well as Mr. Falls, you know, is, and I know you're looking at this. So this is not, this is just direction from us to consider that. It's a sizable amount of fund balance also. As we look at our strategic priorities, I'm not suggesting that we reduce any of those. That we take care of them all. I'm suggesting is direction to, for the 1 cent reductions. It's got to be sustainable, but I think we can do that.
I feel like that this board has made a substantial commitment to additional time and involvement and engagement, and that shows in the work sessions and it shows in the regular discussion and dialogue and direction that's offered. I think for all of us, we move forward understanding that this isn't a one-time reform. This is about strengthening our organization, staying abreast of environmental changes, and making sure we're continually evolving and addressing new risks to the organization. And I think that's our focus and the focus of the board as we've all learned, you know, reaching a place of stability and accepting where we need to be just isn't real, it's just not a reality for an organization this large and this complex that delivers such critical services. Your reform or undertaking is an ongoing commitment by the staff and by the board. And I've sensed that from the board and I've sensed it from staff.
All right, thank you, Ms. Stone. Any other, any other comments from commissioners at this time? Just, you know, the one, one comment I would just add, and which is that I am, I really, I mean, I agree with every, I agree with all of these priority, not priority, I agree with all of these recommendations. And one that didn't get mentioned, so I'll just speak to, is, I really do think it's important for us to put in place the annual review processes with, you know, the county manager and our department heads. You know, this is a big organization with thousands of employees. It's their job to run this organization on a day-to-day basis. There's just a few employees that report directly to the Board of Commissioners. So I think part of the commission doing its job is to have a good, healthy, standard process for regularly communicating with and reviewing our staff. So I think that's important, and I'm glad that we're putting that in place. So I support all of this, but I think that's part of it. And it doesn't have to be a, you know, I don't see that as a negative process. I see that as a critical, positive process for having a good, good working relationship and helping us figure out ways to do our jobs better. So, all right.
I agree with that, and I think it's important enough to do that.
But I agree with the chairman on that particular issue. But the other issues were already brought forward. That issue there, we'd all talked about doing it anyway because it hadn't been done. So I agree with that one. And it's like I said, I still give them an A up to this point because we've all had a tough time. And, but I hope this is finished and voted so good.
So we, I kind of asked that question because I wasn't totally clear on that. I, 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 I mean, if someone, anybody here can make a motion. But my sense is that this was kind of to spark a conversation and to have some dialogue around these issues, not to take a formal vote tonight. So that's, I think it's been a good discussion, and we don't have to all agree on every single detail of this to kind of talk about the direction we're going in and some of these specific plans that we want to, we want to make some progress on this year. So if everyone's comfortable with that, I think we can just leave it there for now. All right, all right, thank you, thank you, Ms. Stone, thank you, Commission. Next item on the agenda is a presentation on the FY '17 audit. And Tim Flora and the audit team is here to present that to you this evening.
But before, can I?
Yes, Mr. Whiteside.
Can I, can I do it up here and you won't be going down?
Either way, you're, you're at my pleasure.
As Vice, Commissioner Whiteside is Vice Chair now of the Audit Committee. And with myself on there, I'd like for you to get down and read it.
Yes, sir. Commissioners and people in attendance, let me read to you what we, staff and all. This is from the Audit Committee, it's dated January 18th, I mean, January 9th, 2018. Dear Chairman Newman and Commissioners, the firm of Guukian CPA Group presented financial statements for fiscal year ending June 30th, 2017 to the Audit Committee on December 12th, 2017. The auditors issued an unmodified report indicating that financial statements were fairly presented based on generally accepted accounting principles. Although often a routine matter to the general public, an unmodified opinion on the county's financial statements is very important and gives testimony to the competency and hard work of CFO Tim Flora and the staff who work under his supervision. External financial auditors are not required, as part of their audit procedures, to audit their clients' internal control processes and procedures. External auditors are required to make note if in the course of their audit, a material weakness in internal control over financial reporting or compliance with major federal or state programs is identified. Guukian CPA Group did not identify any material weaknesses in internal control over physical, over financial reporting or compliance with major federal or state programs while performing work related to fiscal year end 6/30/17, the audit. The Audit Committee understands that Guukian CPA Group is limited in their scope of commenting on material weaknesses to those that apply to financial reporting or compliance with major federal or state programs. However, given the Audit Committee's broader purview over internal control, the committee wishes to comment on internal... wishes to comment on internal control more specifically. The most effective internal controls over county assets become much less so in an environment that affords senior management extremely broad powers over financial resources and personnel. In addition, the effectiveness of the internal audit function in prior years was limited, given the internal auditor reported to senior management for all practical purposes. From this broader perspective, the Audit Committee believes that internal controls were weak during fiscal year end 6/30/17 and likely in preceding fiscal years in which those conditions were the rule. The Audit Committee appreciates the recent steps taken by the commissioners to address those weaknesses and their continued resolve toward transparency and a more effective environment for the internal audit function. And it signs sincerely, Larry B. Harris, Chair Audit Committee for Buncon County. I'd also like to add here, some of the Audit Committee reports recent changes that elevate the audit process as it should be. And let me just read the bullets here, because I want these to make sure they go in the record, both sheets. First strengthens the charter and dialogue, and these all have been done. We strengthened the membership of the county audit committee, and we did that by moving in line with all counties, or most counties in North Carolina, where we've had one commissioner on the audit committee. We now have two. Clarifies the reporting line of internal auditor with access to the board. Ensures the internal auditor cannot be hired, fired, or disciplined without consideration with the Audit Committee. Gives the Audit Committee the responsibility of approving the annual internal audit plan and reporting annually to the county board. Educates employees that everyone has a responsibility to ensure good controls and practices as followed by COSA, the national standard. Establishes the internal auditor as the central point for all whistleblower complaints, where in the past that was going to the office of the county manager. Now, if you don't have any question from the Audit Committee, I'll turn it over to you.
Chairman Newman, Vice Chair Friar, and Commissioners, I am here tonight along with our external auditors from Gould-Kayin CPA Group to present the results of our fiscal year 2017 financial audit. I will speak first, called by Ed Towson, a principal and president of Gould-Kayin. We welcome your questions following our presentation. The audit opinion letter, the audited financial statements, and other relevant financial information is relayed through our comprehensive annual financial report. This report is an incredible, in-depth source of information about Buncon County, our financial condition, and where county dollars have been used. This report is produced in accordance with generally accepted accounting principles and federal and state requirements. It provides a transparent snapshot of our financial position for our constituents. For those less interested in a deep dive, the statistical section in the back of the report is a great reference for historical information comparing where we are today versus the past 10 years. The full report is available to view and download on our website. Under normal circumstances, I would highlight our unmodified opinion and speak about how our financial position is sound and stable, which it is. I would also spend time thanking my staff and the auditors for their work, which I also still want to do. However, it is well-known there is currently an investigation of our former county manager, and the nature of this investigation is related to potential fraud. There has been much speculation, both internally and externally, surrounding this investigation. That is why tonight, I believe, I must address these concerns. So how can we have an unmodified opinion, commonly referred to as a clean audit, under these circumstances? How can I also say we are in good financial position considering the information published by the media? And finally, how can those things be true, and yet we still have an investigation? We are in an unusual situation, and these are just some of the basic questions raised. I would like to review these briefly to share my thoughts on these questions. Let's start with how can we have a clean audit? The scope of the audit, what we hired our external auditors to do, was to audit the accuracy of our financial statements. These are accurate and have always been accurate, to the best of our knowledge. The auditor does not make a determination of whether fraud has occurred, whether there have been unreasonable misstatements in the financial statements. There are none. That's all a clean audit means. And while a single tax dollar used wrongly is a material event and a betrayal of public trust, a clean audit does not indicate that no wrongdoing has occurred. How can we be in good financial position? Many actions by the county manager have been questioned. These fall largely into two categories, those that were inappropriate and those that were technically under her granted authority but are questionable due to the other factors. The dollar value of the first category, those that are inappropriate, as far as I am currently aware, are not large enough to affect county operations, and we remain in a stable financial position despite these events. All other question events, as discovered through our internal reviews, happen through budgeted expenditures and also do not affect our financial position in any new ways. Finally, there have been unsubstantiated reports of funds missing or unaccounted for. There is no money missing. Every dollar in our financial system is accounted for in these statements we present to you And finally, how did something like this happen in the first place? This is the easiest question to answer. We are not perfect. We are human. Our system is obviously not perfect. Our system was obviously not perfect in the past, and although it has improved, it is still not perfect today, even with the important changes the board and the current county manager have made. Before, we had protocols in place to prevent and detect wrongdoing. However, we let someone in power and position take advantage of those systems. We also operated in an environment where discovering these exploits was made difficult and making changes to any other weaknesses incredibly hard. I want to recap county finances' role in these events to hopefully help answer any remaining questions under the limitations imposed due to the ongoing investigation. Here's a very summarized timeline of events. Starting in the fall of 2016, there were some peculiar decisions and directions provided by the former county manager that came across as odd. Nothing concrete, mind you, just things that made me scratch my head and wonder what's going on. In the spring of 2017, there were some questionable actions by the county manager that raised and raised flags for finance staff. Not much detail can be provided at this time, but these actions led to an increased level of scrutiny regarding specific financial events. It is likely you, the board, and the public are unaware of these actions, because ultimately they were prevented from occurring because of our internal controls. Over a four-day period in June 2017, Finance noticed a series of irregularities tied to the former county manager. Again, our internal controls caught these events. However, in these circumstances, the controls were detective in nature, meaning the events had already occurred but were discovered through routine analysis and review. Some irregularities were quickly deemed inappropriately, and an internal review was begun. Because of the nature of events and circumstances, our internal auditor and human resources director were immediately notified and consulted. The weekend following these discoveries, irregularities were documented and delivered the following Monday to our senior attorney for his advice and counsel. Based on this, it was determined that a potential breach had occurred. While the senior attorney immediately notified the proper legal authorities, Finance, HR, and IT began the process of restricting county manager access to our systems as well as the administration building. The county manager was informed of the restrictions placed upon her. We, collectively meeting Finance, IT, internal audit, human resources, legal, and budget, began the process of locking down information to preserve evidence. These events occurred the last two weeks of June as an organization we were transitioning to a new county manager. Many were notified, and there was much activity. However, I want to speak specific to events of Finance as outlined in this timeline. In July, as the new county manager assumed her position, we also just ended our fiscal year and began a new budget cycle. During this timeframe, we also broadened our internal review to determine the financial impact of the identified events and worked with authorities as they began their investigation. In July, we notified our external auditors, Gould-Kayin CPA Group, who had already started work on the year-end audit of the internal review findings and external investigation. We provided them with the most up-to-date information we had. Shortly thereafter, we also contacted our state oversight agency, the Local Government Commission, who in turn notified the state treasurer and the state auditor. A public trust had been broken. As such, it was imperative that we identify not only the financial impact to the county, but as well to determine the integrity of our financial protocols and assess our internal controls framework as an effective tool for prevention and detection moving forward. During July, a historical review of our prior year's transactions was started, and we continue to go through this process. During the six, during the months of August through October, we worked with Gould-Kayin to determine what impact the events surrounding the investigation had on the financial statements and the county's financial condition. Earlier, I mentioned two types of events we examined that resulted in the investigation, questionable actions and those that were clearly inappropriate. The authorities continue their investigation, and I will leave it to them to determine the legality. However, let me speak to the financial impact. Again, any misuse of taxpayer dollars is a material event and a betrayal of public trust. That cannot be emphasized enough, and that misuse must be dealt with. However, material has a different meaning when speaking in financial statement presentation terms. In this case, material means impact on the presentation of the financial numbers and its accuracy. The material impact of the clearly inappropriate activity as it relates to the alleged misuse of gift cards and purchase card activity does not affect the accuracy of the financial statements or the county's financial condition. There were other things examined initially and thereafter that were and still are questionable in nature. Those continue to be discussed internally and in public. We have looked at those, evaluated them, and asked many questions. Ultimately, though, whether you agree with it or not, whether right or wrong, again, leaving that for the authorities to decide, these events occurred through the budgetary process. They were budgeted expenditures that have been accounted for through normal operations and do not affect our financial condition, other than that as done by any other budgeted activity. But these events speak loudly to our past failures at transparency and accountability. Things were approved. Authority was granted. It was clear messages got muddled, intent obfuscated. As department heads, we let ourselves be put in silos. We trusted when we should have questioned, and when we did question, we let ourselves be convinced. And so that leaves us where we are today, me standing here justifying what I consider a successful audit while the county has a cloud over its head. We have all been let down. We have been misled. We thought we were better than this. We know we were better than this. Public trust has been compromised. We cannot let these actions define us nor interfere with the tremendous work otherwise done by county staff. We shall learn from these mistakes and continue to work tirelessly to prevent this from occurring in the future. Good, positive changes have already been made, and we will continue to make more. Your leadership has been swift. The leadership of county manager Stone has been strong. Change was long overdue. It is here now, and we, as an organization, embrace it and will now strive to earn the public's trust again as we become more transparent and accountable. And with that, I'm going to invite Ed Towson from Gould-Kayin to say a few words.
I want to start by expressing on behalf of Gould-Kayin our appreciation for the opportunity to perform the annual audit of the county. We talk about this internally to our staff. They talk about it actually in the engagement about what a significant and important operation it is to perform the audit. We take very seriously our obligation to the taxpayers. We are mostly taxpayers ourselves in Buncon County, and so we do, it's an obligation we take very seriously. We take the trust of the taxpayers seriously, and we want to be sure that our role in the whole system is performed to the best of our abilities. So we do thank you for the opportunity. It is an honor to perform the county's audit each year. We also do thank the staff of the finance department for all of the work they do to enable us to do our job. We would like to cover a couple of things as a follow-up to the financial statement presentation and just really try to clarify a few things for, just so that everybody knows whose responsibilities are on where and what we can do and how we might be able to assist with some recommendations going forward. It's already been discussed, really twofold, about the nature of auditing financial statements and a clean opinion. So we opined that there were no material modifications necessary for the financial statements to be in conformity with GAAP and presented in a correct and material basis. We talked about materiality a little bit. Tim talked about materiality. We agree, and in fact, our audit standards say, we agree with Tim, and our audit standards say, that there is no materiality when it comes to fraud. So we believe that if one dollar of taxpayer money is used inappropriately, of course, if we spot it, we will report it. Fraud detection, though, is not one of the primary goals of a financial statement audit. It is, in fact, a stated goal of assuring that the financial statements are presented correctly, in conformity with GAAP, and that all material transactions are properly reported. Fraud, we're not happy about, and I want to talk about a couple of other things related to how that can interact with the financial statement audit. So I want to take one minute and talk about the procedures that we employ in part of the audit. So we do a lot of different things, obviously. It wouldn't make sense, we'd be camped out here all the time if we reviewed every single transaction of the county incurred. What we do do is we do a combination of tests. We do substantive tests where we review every transaction in certain key accounts or certain account balances. We confirm critical balances with outside third parties so that we don't simply rely on what the finance department or anybody else says. We go to the source, excuse me, and say, "Is this number correct? Is this the right sales tax revenue? Is this..." Whatever it is, we track those numbers down with third parties. We review the minutes of your meetings. They're scintillating, and we hang on every word. We do review the minutes of these meetings, and we review as well budget resolutions and amendments and other board-approved policies, primarily to see how they intersect what's actually happened in the financial reporting and the accounting of the transactions. We also test systems, and so on a sample basis, we review activities in various accounts, trace them to underlying documentation, and form an opinion about whether those systems are reliable and, as a result, can support the transactions other than the ones that we've identified individually. So those tests are reliable when there's a system of internal control. Buncon County has a strong system of internal control. Can it be stronger, and is it appropriate? Can it be stronger and is it appropriate to discuss additional procedures or changes in procedures? Absolutely. But a strong system of internal control is designed to do two things. One is, it's designed to help prevent fraud, defalcation and misstatement, just simple errors that could occur in posting transactions. And it's a system that is designed to detect it. On the prevention side and on the detection side, there are a couple of key things that we look for. One is segregation of duties. Another is separation of certain kinds of transactions so that there are at least two or more people involved. And it's our understanding, and it's not known because the investigation is not complete, but it's our understanding that in the questionable transactions involving P cards, there in fact were two or more people involved. Now, it has kind of an ugly name in accounting. We call that collusion. And it usually, you think of it usually as two people that participate in an activity where they both benefit. And that's not the case. Sometimes collusion is inadvertent. There's so much trust in an individual that a person does what they're instructed to do. And we suspect that some of that occurred. And then sometimes collusion can occur simply because the person, you know, has some fear or other worry about their job or something that could happen. And so when we get to that point, then there's a little bit of a problem, which is the system of internal control on the preventative side is undermined. This is often called override of internal control. So, is there any way to prevent two people working together to override a system of internal control? Well, accounting writers and professors and so forth say, there's really not. I mean, we could keep adding people, but it's possible, it's always possible that a group of people could override internal controls. But what's strong about the county's system of internal control to us is the detection side. So, there's a process whereby the transactions on the P cards are reviewed in the finance department. That process resulted in the questions and then the subsequent procedures that Tim described. So, are we happy that possibly a fraud occurred? Absolutely not. Are we alarmed that there's not a functioning system of internal control for Buncombe County? That's not the case. We know it did function. In fact, the detection part of the system of internal control is what resulted in all of the steps that resulted in the spot we are in now. I also want to talk about why we didn't report a deficiency. So, I've just described how system of internal control works. We rely on it. We document the system of internal control. We rely on it for certain tests. We do walkthroughs. We test certain aspects of the system. The system itself is designed in a way that is reliable and therefore it is not deficient. Can it be improved? Any system can be improved. But it was reliable and, again, it did detect, it did detect the problem. Now, one of the recommendations that we have in this area, though, is what could be done with that system aside from some of the planned improvements that would strengthen that same place? And the answer there is something that's often called the tone at the top. And what that basically describes is making sure that every person in the system, every employee, every person in finance realizes that they have a duty and responsibility to report anything that they think is not appropriate or to question it and to make sure that there's education in that area. You know, there was an old saying, I think of World War II, see something, say something. And that should be the encouragement for the educational processes, the systems to allow people to report and to supervisors or on the whistle blow line or any other mechanism. So, we agree that that is an important part to strengthening the system. Are there any questions for us?
Thank you very much for the presentation.
Do you have a quick question?
Just a quick question to clarify.
If the scope that you all have been tasked with was defined differently or more broadly, let me start that over. Are there ways that the scope could be assigned to an external audit firm that would look more squarely at some of the issues that have come up during this period?
That's a great question. There is an entirely separate engagement that external auditors can perform, which is an audit of the system of internal control. It would be unusual for a normal financial audit to expand the scope of internal controls because there is a certain matter, a certain amount of auditor judgment now where it tests. Because again, the whole system is on the test basis. But it certainly is possible to engage external auditors, to really examine and report on just on internal control.
Thank you.
Other questions or questions?
I have one for Tim. It might be worth, while commenting on, the P cards were not just for 2017. They were
Three years, at least.
They were multiple years. So, I know there were some things found and there were some kind of bells and whistles and things that went off, you know, in the finance department. Can you comment on, you know, the timing of that? Why some of these things maybe were not detected or were maybe not in previous year's audits? And I must
So, I can speak in general terms.
Let me finish just one second. Apologize. I want to commend both of you for a very thorough discussion, very thorough information from both of you. It was excellent. I appreciate it from each of you. Just your thoughts on that.
Sure. So, in general terms, we don't audit every single P card transaction. It's more of a statistical, random sampling of activity. So, you know, it could be, you know, I really think the way I used to do it was sort of a random number generator. You'd match it to that P card and you'd pull it. And then you would just, you would audit perhaps just a one month's worth of transactions to see that everything was, looked good. So, based upon, you know, the amount of resources we had, you know, we were limited to the number of random audits that we could do. But that would be how that would, how you may not have caught a prior year. If we find something, then again, you expand your universe and you continue to pull that thread. But in this situation, you know, it's caught in a routine review. So then we pulled the thread.
So, it's my understanding that HHS has uses P cards as well, and this may be a subject for another night. But, you know, from the information we have so far, the abuse of the P cards went on for at least three years as far as we know with large amounts. I guess I'd be interested to know the difference of policy that HHS had with P cards versus what the county did with P cards because, and I think we need to aggressively look at different policies because random checks didn't serve us very well.
I can speak to what we did in HHS for P cards and what we still do. Part of our requirements, in order to submit those expenses for reimbursement for state and federal government, we're required to make sure that we have all those receipts. And those receipts are verified each month with those P card transactions to assure that they, one, are eligible for reimbursement according to state and federal guidelines and, two, that to make sure that they were legitimate purchases.
And, you know, I've mentioned before, I keep saying the term gatekeeper, but, you know, a gatekeeper policy is not a random function that we were retired to before based on staff, but it's a, it's specifically looking at every transaction and if something pops up. And so, again, that's for a future date, but let's continue the discussion on it. But both presentations were
And I would like to clarify one other thing because each department is required to go through approval process with their P card transaction. So, it's not that, you know, someone who has a P card makes a purchase and then it just works its way up to finance. I mean, it has to work through the process in the department itself as well. So, department heads are responsible for an improvement, an approval process to ensure that by the time it gets to finance, that those transactions have been approved by the department as something that was legitimate. So, even in those other transactions, that, it went through an approval process in the department. So, there was at least another level of control. And that is one of the things we look at when we do our audits, audits, is to make sure that, you know, the approval process was followed, that there's proper documentation.
Well, you know, what was surprising to me, Commissioner, is doing this, is that I didn't realize we don't have a purchasing department. And by not having a purchasing department, we're slim, sure. It's cut out some process, but we've been using these P cards, correct me if I'm wrong, Tim, to buy supplies.
Yes.
And to me, if we were buying them in bulk, wouldn't it be cheaper? I mean, that's something I think, you know, we need to look at.
Commissioner, I think that we do, and I've seen areas way back before as commissioners that I looked at, that P card is good up to like, has a $10,000 limit to buy, you know, in the bulk form. And it, you know, they buy $8,000 one day and $8,000 the next, but it's basically legitimate stuff to buy. And that's, that's the way that, from what I understand it, that I've seen, even before as commissioner.
Well, let's look at it this way, Commissioner, if I, if you've got deep departments out there and they're all buying the same thing, but buying them separately, wouldn't it make more sense to have somebody to buy it in bulk?
I like how you're thinking. I said, I would agree with you.
Yeah. This is what I'm getting at. You know, at some point in time, folks, we gotta use, give you a common sense.
I will say that the P card program is our highest risk program. That is, that is the program that I am most concerned with, that has the highest risk and I think is as far as potential misuse. There are benefits to having them. I mean, there is a flexibility to having them. I mean, it is nice for our general services folks when they are out on a job to be able to run the lows and rap something as opposed to go. Or our emergency management people when there becomes a crisis and they need something on the fly. So, there are, there are good uses for
Oh, I agree.
These programs.
But it seems to me that everybody's got
Yes. Well, I think we have about 280, I think, P cards in the county. So, that's
Oh, is that all?
Yeah.
Oh, 1,400.
How many would they take, Josh? I just, I'm, I'm just disappointed that nothing was put in place. You know, we can say this was a one-off horrible thing that happened, but you only learn, and I think we need a hard correction and maybe explore some different ways of accountability with P cards because those charges are outrageous, absolutely mind-boggling, crazy. And it happened over a period of three years. And we need to find out the system failures and if we have to change the amount that can be charged on one, two people have to sign off on it. But those are mind-boggling.
So, Commissioner, we need to vote to accept the audit that's been presented this evening. Is that correct?
I don't think you necessarily have to, but
I would just see this as a report of the audit committee or of the auditors to the board. And it's just for your information. I don't know if you have to add on.
Okay. All right. Thank you for that clarification. Are there, on this item, at this time? All right. Well, Commissioner White's side, thank you for the, thank you for the report from the audit committee and to the Goldkillian folks and to our, and to Tim Flor. Thank you for a very thorough presentation. We appreciate this. And obviously, there's a lot of interest in making sure we are doing everything we can to get this right, both with the formal audit, internal auditing and any other procedures that we need to put in place to make sure that the money is accounted for and used in a responsible way. So, thank you for this, this report. And we will move on to the next item on the agenda now, which is two resolutions declaring ambulances as surplus property for the donation of those vehicles to Fairview Fire District and the Buncombe County Rescue Squad. And Mike Frue will present this item.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, the county EMS department recently upgraded its fleet of ambulances. I think there's 10 of them. I'm not exactly sure. At this time, there's two surplus ambulances in the fleet with roughly 150 and 165 miles on them respectively. Fairview Fire Department, I think it's all, Chief Jones back in here, they have recently requested that if they're, if they're determined that there's a surplus ambulance, that they'd be very interested in receiving it to supplement there. I think they have one vehicle and they want to make sure they can keep a vehicle on in service all the time. So, according with general statutes, the county may transfer to nonprofit organizations that carry out public purpose, surplus vehicles to continue to carry out that public purpose. And this vehicle is in the fleet. The facilities department's recommended that it be declared surplus and transferred to Fairview Fire. This is within the discretion of the board to yea or nay this request. And if there's any questions for me or Chief Jones, just let us know.
I'd like to make a motion that we convey this
Second.
To Fairview Fire Department.
Motion, in a second. Question, what's the estimated value of the vehicle?
I think through GOV deals, I think I understand that a vehicle like this might sell for $12,000 roughly, based on history.
So, about $12,000 each? I would say the average probably is about $12,000. All right. Any questions or comments from the board? We will take other comments.
Now, you mentioned they have one ambulance or two?
I understand they have two currently.
Okay. Yeah, I thought it was two. And the reason for this additional ambulance?
Let Chief Jones come address that.
Commissioners, basically what we're trying to do is, we've experienced an increase in our EMS calls. And basically what we're doing right now is we've got two EMS trucks on the road and we're just trying to make sure that when one of those breaks down or needs to be repaired or serviced or whatever, that we continue to maintain that, that level of just two trucks. We're not adding any more staff or having three ambulances on, or in service at one time. It's just to maintain that, that coverage of two ambulances for, for the district at all times, so.
Yeah, okay. Now, that's what I was aware of first, that there was a second ambulance. If one's down, you're wanting to have one to put in service. Last week, heard a different analysis of it, that the one, the second one you got is too small.
Well, it's not necessarily too small. It's just that then holder, the box is an older unit than the one from the county. Someone like me, it's extremely hard to work in the back of it just due to my height. So, the box on the county unit is much larger, so it's a whole lot easier to actually work out of. So, we were using this one. We originally purchased it as a backup unit. And since we purchased it as a backup unit, it's actually, we've managed to, we've had, like I say, an increase in calls in our district. So, both of them are staying on the road on a regular basis. So, if one of them goes down, we're kind of losing, you know, a level of care out there and we're having to wait, you know, an extended amount of time for someone to get out there with an ambulance. So, only thing we're trying to do is maintain that. What we've gotten now is two ambulances in service.
Well, that's a thing. So, Well, that's a thing, so it will be three ambulances, but you'll have you will not sell one of these. I mean, I just want some clarification here.
Yeah, we're just trying to. We're just trying to utilize, basically, the, the one we've gotten out, uh, the older one. We were wanting to keep it and maintain it just in case one of the others breaks down or needs to be serviced or something. That way we're continually maintaining two ambulances in service at all times. Cause actually, we won't have enough equipment to keep all three in service. Cause if one breaks down, we're gonna have to move some of that equipment to that third ambulance to make sure, uh, we maintain, you know, two ambulances in service at all times, so.
Great, and I guess that's it. I mean, I just wanna make sure that, I mean, obviously there was more ambulances out cause if anything ever happened to me, I wanna make sure there's something out there to pick me up.
Anyone be able to finish it?
But yes, that's all.
Question, um, is this the first time that the county's, uh, used this approach for, uh, making further use of, uh,
This is the first time I do recall this being on the agenda. It's been a number of times for surplus vehicles standing there.
One other, one other time, was it? Barnsfield, Barnsfield, we had one ambulance, we gave them one for backup.
So I, it seems like a great, you know, great use of the, um, the vehicle. Question is, um, actually my little question is, how do we make these decisions kind of going forward? Because I could see how there could be, you know, different departments who might want a donation of a vehicle like this. So how do we, um, how do we do this if we, if we're gonna do this in the future? I just wanna make sure we have kind of a, you know, a good process for making the decision for, for that. Any thoughts on that?
Currently, uh, we, we've discussed this in-house at SLT and this is, it's been in the past, the first come, first served request basis. But we have discussed the necessity for a process and how we're gonna make choices of this nature, whether or not we should just, uh, put any surplus property on Gov deals. So that's something that we'll have to work through.
All right, uh, if we, do we have a motion and, uh, we do have a motion in second on this? I will ask if any members of the public would comment on the motion. Mr. Rice.
All right, Mr. Howard White's side's comment, we're gonna time him to finish that. You know, uh, if you're taking these properties and giving them to another one, then what is the process? Do you stop it when you get an ambulance with 160-some thousand miles on it? Is it out of commission because it's, it's something the state says you gotta get it off of the road? And if it's true that the thing is still in use and running, then why don't the one that's given away still use it? Because if you, if you don't, uh, look at it from that point of view, then you're gonna have to come up with a policy that's going to start shoving a lot of this newer stuff down the line. It's gonna start running up the cost again. Cause it's a lot easier to probably buy a new one and have insurance on it and stuff like that. It's going, the maintenance is gonna be less. And you heard they got rid of the, the, the diesels and got gas back because of stuff going on with the diesel. So I'm, I'm with Mr. Newman on what is the process? Because I think you could run into a lot of money here. And yeah, somebody can benefit, but what's the state protocol on this? Can you get rid of an ambulance, whatever, or they say you can't run it anymore?
All right, bring you back to the board. Uh, we've got a motion in second, any other questions? All in favor? Lee, oh, wait, I'm sorry, let's, and let's just take, make sure we take these, uh, one at a time. Could, could, um, could we have a motion? Can we redo this to have a motion first on the ambulance at the Fairview Fire District? Or is that how you made the motion, for Fairview first? Okay, great, all right. Okay, thank you, thank you for that clarification.
Yeah.
All right, all in favor of the proposal to donate the ambulance to the Fairview Fire Department?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? All right. And, um, we need a motion on the Buncombe County Rescue Squad.
I make a motion to, um, did he wanna talk about that at all?
Commissioner Frost, I don't think so, it's the same, it's the same general.
I'll make a motion to, um, turn over to the Buncombe County Rescue Squad.
I see. Further discussion?
Just, uh, keep me up to date here. Is this gonna be ongoing, I don't think you asked a question. So I would not know more about that throughout that.
Sure. So, okay. I, I, I mean, I appreciate the answer, we just, we, we should have a process and not that we necessarily do have a process other than first come, first served, so. I, I, do you anticipate, how much more of this do we anticipate? I guess, I wanna make sure, one question, yes sir?
These are the only two that we're aware of.
Well, okay, how this, how this broke down a couple months ago is, uh, Barnsfield called me and asked how they could buy an ambulance, buy, not being on Gov, Gov code. And I told him I did not know. So I put him in touch with Greg and then they got Mr. Stone. And they determined that there's a possibility because you did not have a backup, that we would give you an ambulance. Now, they had one ambulance and the turbo went out, so they borrowed an ambulance from, uh, Scallon until they got their ambulance back. So now they have a ambulance sitting in their bay as a backup, which they don't, they don't have the product to put on it. And that's where this got started and the other ones were supposed to have been sold, but somehow they ended up sitting there. And they supposed to went back on Gov code. Uh, I don't, uh, really, Fairview I understand, uh, I don't understand Buncombe Rescue at all. Cause I don't know how they're part of the, whatever people wanna do up here, that's fine. But I don't, I don't get that. Cause fire departments, we understand, there's six fire departments that have ambulances out of the whole district. And so we're, the other ones haven't asked for anything and I think that this right here, whatever we vote on to give them an ambulance, this should end the process. Because if they're gonna be in business, they need to be able to afford to buy what they have.
Well, and I think, um, part of this started, now we have a policy, I understand, for vehicle replacement. Before, it appeared it was rather willy-nilly. And the past manager was out consulting everybody, bought all the ambulances in the spring. So that's how we had all new ambulances. So that's what created, uh, having three extras.
No, they did it all at one time. They, they just put them on Gov code three at a time instead of selling them all at once because that would keep the price up.
Right, but my point is because we had all the new ones, um, we were put in this position. But it's my understanding this is the last one and, um, we have all new ones otherwise.
So my question is, have we sold all the old?
Some of all the other ones, these, this and these two just never made it.
Oh, okay, so the rest are gone?
All the rest have been sold.
Okay.
They just.
And I would just say, well, I would agree that we need, um, to relook at the policy. It, it's not, I mean, we have had a process. One, um, Greg Israel, who manages the fleet, has verified there's an available surplus not needed to support our own fleet. And two, Mr. Behan, who serves as our EMS director and, and is our liaison to all these departments, has made the recommendation around both of these, um, supposed or requested donations. Um, we would agree if we're gonna face this again, as, as Mr. Frue said, we want a written policy.
Yeah, I don't think it'd be very hard to just look at the mileage of, on what we have. Both of these are, one's 155,000, the other's 166, so it's obviously tied to the, to the mileage, uh, on the, on the vehicle, I would assume.
So I think so, and Mr. Rice was correct, what I understand as well. I mean, it was a switch from the, the cost of maintaining the diesel engines and the economical factors of moving back to gas for these new vehicles.
And I don't, I don't think it's a, a bad thing, allowing a fire department to be able to utilize this piece of equipment for backup, as opposed to giving it away on Gov deals.
We don't give them away, we sell them.
I know you said. You do.
We get, we get market value for it, it'll help us, or we're that tax rate by a penny of what you talked about earlier.
Yeah, well, we have this, we have this, that's good. But, so, yeah, well, and I don't disagree with, with your, with your point, just saying that if, to me, and I don't know anything about the ambulance. To me, $12,000 sounds like not a lot of money, and that's what I mean when I say, said, uh. And we're actually talking about this a really long time, so, uh, I gotta, I think we got a motion in second.
Mr. Fruskin?
Uh, having a little bit of mechanical background, this could also be very good in knowing what the life of this. It could go up to 200,000 miles or 225. So what we're doing right now could benefit us two, three, four years down the road, so.
Yes, sir, but I don't have an answer.
Yeah, I mean, with time it'll tell.
Yes.
I, I just think that this is a no-brainer with, um, more and more need for ambulance service, um, to, you know, grant this. Especially it's been, you know, the Director of Emergency Services asked for this and, um, we are being pushed like crazy for ambulance service, so I think it's a no-brainer.
All right, all questions?
Well, yeah.
All in red?
Since we're doing this tonight, you know, everybody's talked, everybody wants more ambulances out there. Well, we've got a company that's walked in here many times and they supposed to have an insurer. It's time to give them the insurer. I want all ambulances put on, I'll be more than happy to vote for one for Buncombe Rescue, but I know another company that's been buying theirs and they're out there in ambulance service. So, um, I'm not worried about whatever another company says, it's time for us to say, it's time to put them on. And then we'll have them all out there, so. I'll vote for this, if we can get a vote, we'll get, we have all ambulances, I'm voting.
I don't think we have a report back from the other.
We're gonna vote on this, but that's not the motion, that's on the table, so, uh, all right.
Do you know, do, do we know who Buncombe Rescue is? Who all knows that?
There's a gentleman in the back who wants to speak.
Been around a long time, you know that? Well, my name's Ryan Jordan, I'm the chief of the Buncombe Rescue Squad. I can hear it's my task to answer any questions, y'all might have.
Thank you for coming. Um, could you just share a little bit with us about the context of the need and the request?
Yes, so, uh, for those of you who don't know, Buncombe Rescue Squad is a nonprofit organization. It's part of the county emergency response system. We're actually allowed for by state statute. We've existed in the county since 1962 and are, are part of the county as a ball. Traditionally, we used to do a lot of vehicle extrications. Over the years, we've kind of given that over to the fire departments because it makes more sense for them to go since they're closer to the community. Uh, our purpose recently, since I've been chief, is we assist with wilderness search and rescue. We assist with providing the fire departments firefighter rehabilitation services. So we're there to care for the firefighters, they're caring for our community. And, uh, we also provide ambulance services, which is the part that helps us allow our volunteer program to continue. That's what pays for our volunteers to be trained, outfitted, equipped to do their job. So our ambulance services that we are requesting, uh, we're requesting a truck for backup. Currently, we run two to three trucks per day. We run a contract with Mission Hospital to do, um, convalescent care and then we run 911 response for the county. Uh, we do have a spare truck as it is right now, but like all the other fire departments in the county, we're plagued with the constant mechanical failures, especially with these diesel exhaust fluid emissions. The truck that we're requesting to backup is a 2002 ambulance and I don't remember the mileage, I'm gonna put it in our request letter. Uh, no, our mileage. Off the top of my head, I wanted to say it's well over 200,000 miles, if not 300,000. It's got some age on it and it is pretty much a daily runner. Uh, we use it to backup our newer trucks, which are constantly breaking down. So this will just be another added backup truck first allowed to assist the community. Thanks very much.
All right, great discussion. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. So item on the, under new business is an amendment to the county employee employment weather policy.
Great timing on that one. We're all, we're all, we're all looking at a map.
Chairman and Commissioners, um, you adopted our first policy and it's no, and there were lessons learned in that process. We did address those employees who by job description are required to work when the county's closed or, um, regardless of the weather. Some of those are in Health and Human Services, some in EMS, the detention center, um, and, and the, in law enforcement. We did not address General Services. General Services is a, a class of employees who are not required to work when the organization's closed, but we missed the point that the, we can't clear sidewalks or parking decks or run ambulances or patrol unless General Services comes in to clear. So you know that your reforms are working and working well. When I made the decision that I thought they should be compensated, given their pay grade and class and that it was not part of their description, Finance said, no, the policy wasn't clear enough. And that, I say, yay, is exactly what we wanna see happen in the new environment, is to say we need to be clear in all aspects of policy. I called or spoke to each of you or through email as we went ahead and processed that, but we wanna read back a policy that's clear and allows Finance to feel like when they're making those calls around compensation for General Services, that it's reflected in the policy you've adopted. So, um, I'm here to celebrate, somebody questioning my authority. Hey, Jennifer, who's back there, and did it with grace and kindness. So that's the only amendment in the policy, is saying General Services is unique and that it's not a part of their job description or their normal work to work when the organization's closed and that they're coming in specifically to allow those emergency service operators to work and that we will compensate them with comp time, um, when they work those hours.
I'd like to make a motion to, um, compensate these employees who are willing to come and work in this horrible weather and do the rest of while we're sitting at home in front of a fireplace.
Second. All right, we've got a motion in second in support of the proposed amendments. Uh, further discussion? Any members of the public wanna comment? All right, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. That concludes our new business. I'd like to make a couple of announcements on vacancies for county commission, Buncombe County Boards. Uh, we have vacancies on the, uh, newly reconstituted library board. There are five vacancies, one from each commission district, and two at large. On the Historic Resource Commission, we have two vacancies. On the Ashford Board of Adjustments, one vacancy, and the County Board of Adjustment, two vacancies. We'll now also, uh, have our general public comment. If you'd like to comment to the board, your time is three minutes. If your time expires, you can leave any questions with your name, address, and phone number with the county manager. Board members are not expected to comment on any matters during public comment. This is the public's opportunity to speak to us. And the board reserves the right to deny public address on topics that have already been covered where there was public comment earlier this evening. Are there any members of the public who'd like to comment? Mr. Rice?
Sit tight, if you slide home, you'll be with me. So I'll just slide to. I want you to pay attention, can you pay attention for a few minutes? Okay. This transparency thing is getting under my skin. We're talking about the state law that we have 15%. Well, state law says eight and a half percent. Recommendation is not. percent. Well, state law says eight and a half percent. And recommendation is not that you have to do it on your fund balance. You've got seventy-five million dollars. A lot of money. Now, you're saying if you reduce that, it's eighteen percent, I think. If you go down to fifteen, you've got seventy-five million? You got that now? Whatever it is, it's a lot of money. Okay? Now, talking about one cent on the tax rate, three point six million dollars? Oh, you just sneezed in your pipe. Let me tell you what. If you want to make an adjustment, let's do it right. State law does not give the school systems a fund balance. They don't even give, you carry that in your fund balance. Now, we're doubling down. We've got Buncombe County School with eleven point nine million as of June thirtieth of last year. That's actually in their done budget. Asheville City has got eight point nine. If you add that together, that is twenty point nine million dollars. So, you divide that by three point six, and the tax rate should be five point eight cents right now. And you add the one cent that you just talked about, we could even bring it to six point eight. Now, if you don't believe my numbers, why do you believe these auditors out here? Go look in your audit book. Now, this don't make common sense when you're wanting to do something for the public, but you're not really being honest with the public where the money is and why you're doing it. These special interest groups like school teachers and all these folks getting the attention where nobody else is. It ain't right. Okay? I don't have a lot.
All right, thank you. Anyone else? All right. I've got a couple of announcements. On January twenty-second at nine AM, the board of commissioners will meet with area college presidents and university, university chancellors and legislative representatives to discuss pre-K needs. That will be at two hundred College Street, first floor conference room. On January thirtieth, there will be an open-air town hall meeting at the AB Tech Mission Conference Center on the campus of AB Tech, three forty Victoria Road, from six to eight PM. On February the sixth, at five PM, we'll hold the next regular board of county commissioners meeting in room three twenty-six at two hundred College Street in downtown Asheville. We need to have a closed session to discuss a personnel matter. Mr. Frue?
Yes, sir. Pursuant to North County General Statute one forty-three, three eighteen eleven A six, discuss a personnel matter, just, that expects some direction from the board.
Okay. And are there any other topics that need to be addressed in closed session?
Chairman, I just have a comment. It looks like we have another emergency service worker in the back. I just want to thank the Frue service. You can leave it if you want to. And, uh, we're always grateful for our Buncombe County Police Department that's here. But I just wanted to acknowledge, uh, it looks like a guest back there. I'm thanking for what they do.
Thank you for doing so. Yes. All right. Is there a motion to go into closed session?
Second.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Um, any opposed? Uh, we will read adjourn to come back into open session, and we'll take no action when we do so.
All right.
Three, two, two more.
Come on. I gotta go back up. Yeah.
All right, uh, we need a motion to return to open session.
Second.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any motion to?
Second.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Sure, let's go.
Thank you, Cam.
Jerry, can you go?
Yeah.